I plead with the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Jake, would you call the roll, please?
Holler? Jordan?
Here.
Slipskum?
Here.
Boopridge?
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Five members present, two absent.
Okay, I was advised in advance that we would be missing three members this evening, so... First item on the agenda is the minutes from the November 21st meeting. Has everyone received their copies of minutes and do you have any questions on them? Okay, hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Thrash? Slipskum? Take a roll call vote, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Slipskum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, we have five zero in papers and the minutes are approved as the official minutes from the November 21st meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we do have a person here speaking from the Chamber of Commerce this evening. It's Wendy Anderson. Wendy, would you up the mic, please?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Wendy Anderson. I'm the executive director of the St. Clairsville Area Chamber of Commerce. And today I'm here just to thank two people and their staff. Donnie Smithberger and Matt Arbenz, because they have publicly, they have helped us through the chamber and everything that we have done. And I put it on Facebook and I say thank you, but I felt like this was the place to do it because I want you to know what they actually do. Matt has been amazing with our Food Truck Fridays and our Second Saturdays and moving things around in our Halloween Bash, which by the way was very successful, and our Christmas Parade and tree lighting. And the same with Donnie. I could not do this without those guys and they don't probably realize that. But when I talked to Donnie and I asked him, hey, can you light the tree? And he's there and it's freezing cold, but he's there, rain, snow, sleet, doesn't matter, he's always there. And the fact that they really do care about the city as much as I do. I've been in my position for five years and I talk to a lot of Chamber of Comerces and they do not have the backing that I have with the Police Department and the City Department and I really appreciate that. And the fact like Tom Murphy has helped me five years now that I know of, maybe longer than that that I've been there, that to do the parade. For that, I'm appreciative. And Linda, you come out and you helped me when you sang last year. And I just think you really need to know this, people need to know how good some of our city people are. And I say that because I don't know a lot of people. But and the mayor, you've helped me out, you know, to do a lot of things and you asked me to help you. And I do that because I think it's very important to have this community that we have and I love this community and I think we have the best community. There's a lot of negativity going around, but you know, we have to change it up to some positive. When people want to move into the city, they call me for whatever reason and they want to move here and I tell them why they should, not why they shouldn't. And I let them know there's buildings and I put it on our Facebook that the pictures of these buildings and I'm trying to get people to come into the city. And one of the things that they look for is a helping hand. And they have it with our City Department and with our Police Department. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to come up here and recognize them. We are actually very blessed with our Police Department and most of our people have been here for years on the street, the electric and water. We're blessed with some good employees, so thank you for recognizing them. Okay, we do have, even though it says not, we did have a last minute correspondence. It just, I thought it was nice to read it. We have received a lot of support from Respecs. They've had a lot of donations for things at the rec center and different functions for the city. So they just, Jake, would you read that, please?
In the spirit of Christmas, we have been serving you for 97 years, continuing on with Grandma Respec's tradition of quality service and value. During this holiday season, more than ever, our thoughts gratefully turn to those who have made our progress possible. And in this spirit, we say, imply simply but sincerely, thank you and best wishes for the holiday season and Happy New Year. Respec's Big Market.
And I think that's very nice that I could say that. They've also helped and contributed a lot of donations for a lot of the functions for the city. Okay, that takes care of that. We'll move on to the reports. Mayor, you have reports?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to throw right back at you to Wendy. The parade was fabulous. That was a beautiful day. It was cold, but I was in a heated car, so what the heck. No, it was beautiful. Thank you for all your hard work. And the same with the tree lighting that night. I unfortunately was unable to attend, but from what I could see on Facebook, it was wonderful. So you do so much for the community and I think we make a pretty dynamic team. So thank you for all you do. It's certainly apparent that Christmas is in the air in St. Clairsville. Our town does look like a Hallmark Christmas card. Thanks to the talents of Brenda Ponzani and volunteers who put the wreaths together and fluffed them up. And to Donnie, the electric and the street departments, they put the decorations up and wrapped the poles. So thank you to all those little elves. I've scheduled meeting with Eric Gay, Jeremy, Jamie Butts, who's the new social work coordinator from the Fire Department, Chief Hall, and Dave Ivan from FEMA. And we're going to discuss possible emergency scenarios with winter coming. I mean, Christmas brings not only wonderful feelings and time with family, but it brings bad weather. And as we all remember from last year, that ice storm is one I hope we don't repeat. But we're going to sit down on Wednesday and see if there's anything we can do to mitigate ahead of time if we get in a situation like that with weather again. We don't want to get through that ice storm from last February and not do something to increase our readiness. We had mayor's court this week. We had six out of 13 defendants showed. And there will be Christmas caroling on Saturday, December 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the gazebo. I urge you all to take a ride past the gazebo after dark. We put lights up in the bushes. There's a Christmas tree donated from a sponsor. We appreciate it. We will have Santa Claus there, hot chocolate and cookies. So and the cookies right back at Respec's. Thank you, Respec's. They will be donating the cookies. So that's about it, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody have any questions?
What time is that at the gazebo?
I'm pretty sure we're looking at 5:00 to 7:00 on the 17th. And I'm going to let Christie take the glory on this, but I do want to mention the race that was run or trotted on Thanksgiving morning. I was not there either, the rec department did. That was a very, very wonderful thing. So I'm sure Christie can give you a live eye in the sky report about that.
Whoever did the gazebo did a good job.
Thank you. That was me. And extra likes, but thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? If you'll move on to Service Director, Mr. Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. There's always lots of stuff going on as usual. Legislation items tonight, we've got 202246. It's a, to put a donation fund for a rec charity event into place. And then 202247 is temporary appropriations for temporary budget. Meetings, not a lot of meetings this last couple of weeks. Been with the holidays and a couple of things going on. Completed projects, though. The South Marietta Culvert was completed. Weather permitting, hopefully that'll be an upcoming project. We might actually get a pave this week. Waste water permit for the plant was renewed. I have copies of that available. There are 40 or 50 pages if anyone wants to read it. It's a barn burner. Shortened suite, they've lowered our mercury levels that were allowed to put out, added additional testing for heavy metals and added additional hardness testing, too. Completed projects, as the mayor mentioned, the turkey trot, the first annual turkey trot and then the Christmas tree and parade. Forgot to thank the shapers on Crescent Road who donated the tree for us to use this year, so thanks to them. Upcoming projects, the Appalachian Regional Grant submission, that was submitted to Bellomar through the county. That's due December 9th. We submitted basically trail extensions and then possible dome over a local pool. Water plant modem, we've got to get an update on that, so that will be coming soon. The water plant's also going to have the sludge ponds pulled out, just part of the annual maintenance and stuff. We didn't think we were going to have to do that with switching to the water, or switching water, but it doesn't look like we're going to switch anytime soon, so. Another thing that just kind of popped up out of the blue, La Roche Tree Service is going to be doing a project down at Central Park. They're going to be training in three different trees. They're going to trim them up. I have a, it's a no cost proposal, so for us allowing them to work in the two trees or three trees, we two maples and the one big oak down by the playground. They're going to trim out the dead wood, also do some additional trimming and different tree things. You can see, if you want to read it, I have that and you can look through it. They're going to be starting tomorrow. I thought it was pretty neat that they're going to no cost for it, so it's a pretty good trade. Construction on the I-70 project. I talked to the contractor again today. Still waiting on those two pieces of the culvert that are going in there. Plaza Drive valves, those are going to be hopefully replaced next week. We talked to the contractor again. They had a bout with the flu, so they're finishing up a couple of projects and then we'll get there next week, be able to do that. As I mentioned, paving on South Marietta, the culvert is completed. Hopefully, we're going to be able to pave this week. The contractor was supposed to give me revised numbers. He's thinking it's going to be under $50,000 for just that south section. So we're going to see what happens there. Hopefully, the rain holds out and we'll be able to do that. Route 40 water extension, still working with the engineer on that to get that finalized. Working with the county for the water agreement. Got a meeting set up with the EPA and county for Wednesday to discuss the switch and how everything's going to go through. Building projects still in progress. The train station, we were notified that our application for the TAP, Transportation Alternative Program, funding was approved for the first round for the train station renovation, so that'd be some extra money coming in for that. Still working at the junior rec building. Still got the police lobby and locker room, K-9 station, still getting all that done. Working on administrative policies and procedures. Trying to get that policy manual updated. It's been five years, so it's time. Same thing with the details and sidewalks. The inflow and infiltration control plan has been submitted to the EPA. We'll wait and hear back from them. Department wise, the electric department's going, still building that power line on the rest of the road, service work, disconnects, pole lights, pole replacement, streetlights, meter reading, substation maintenance, doing truck maintenance, prepping for winter. Water, wastewater department, water line work, still working on our policies and procedures. Mentioned the I-70 project, distribution project. Have not heard back from the EPA on the loan for that. It was supposed to be approved today, actually, so we'll see what we hear. Sledge hauling, before we were fixing hydrants and curb boxes and valves still. Last month, reported that there were 22 water line breaks. Had an update on that. Two of those actually weren't ours, so we've got 20 for the year. Smoke testing, we talked about that before. And then the water nodes, we're finally getting them up and running, starting work. So we're going to be setting up appointments with the residents to get in there and change out the nodes that have gone bad. Street department, still working on leaves this week. We've got the machine out this week. After this week, we're going to do bags only, so if anybody has any leaves or anything, please call the city building, leave an address and we'll go from there. Still cleaning out catch basins. Street sweeper is officially out of service for the season and sent away to get maintenance. We're actually starting to patch potholes with cold patch. We've got enough of that laying around. We're just trying to finish the leaves first before we get in there. Rec center, there's all new lights in the entire building now, all LED lights. Thanks to the electric department for that work. Police, what we approached, we were discussing the other K-9 unit. They're in training now. The new, or the new used Ford Explorer is in. It's getting decals placed on it and will be in service soon. Good to the city. No one's out sick this week. We had somebody out last week with COVID and it's beginning of the month again. So we have a nomination for employee of the month. Let me see here. This person is always willing to pitch in and help out with any project which needs to be done. She asks her family to help also. She's sympathetic, a kind person who excels at her job. She always has mayor's court up and running and running, so it runs smoothly. She is a true asset for the city of St. Clairsville. She also volunteers at school fundraisers. She's administrative assistant. She's been married for 23 years to her husband Brian, has three kids. She enjoys cooking all types of food. She wouldn't specify what.
Bringing it to work.
And bringing it to work, yes. She volunteers for high school band parents. She's a Disney fanatic. If she's not at Disney, then she's planning their next trip to Disney. Star Wars fan and she has two dogs. So this month's employee of the month is Ms. Jen McMillan. That is everything.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the I-70 project, once those two pieces of culvert come in, will it be instant?
Yes. We're literally waiting on those pieces.
And weather will...
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, rain, shine, snow. Contractor knows it needs to happen. So we'll be out in the snow in a little night if we have to.
And also the hydrants. How many have been repaired or how many still?
We've got 10 that are still needing repaired. The one in front of the fire station was backed into. We've been waiting on parts for that. It's eight weeks and more to get parts. Still waiting, a lot of the ones that we have that are damaged don't have rebuild kits available. So that's still the plan when we go through the distribution system to sell. We sell the old fire hydrants, strip out what we can and then we can all, basically just need to put gaskets in. We'll have all the mechanical parts, we just need to put new gaskets in and that should take care of everything.
And then the county extension, I mean, what is, like, to hold up on it? I know it's still April.
It's the county. They're waiting on a retaining wall to be put in so that they can install, I think it was 2,000, 2,000 feet of new water line. They've got the pump in and it's ready to go. The only problem is they're afraid that the new pressure from this pump is going to blow out all this old water line. So they need to get this new water line installed.
Okay, so that will be April or that's just the...
To be honest, my thought is, and that's, I'll know more Wednesday after we meet with them, but I'm preparing the water department to make water until the end of next year.
If they get 200 feet, they're all going to do it.
Well, like 2,000 feet. Yeah, but...
Okay.
It's one of those things that, you know, I've been hearing for almost a year now that this retaining wall is going to be in and that's, and then, and then, and then. And it just is what it is. They're having the same problems we are. They can't find materials and they can't get things.
And then also on the power line progress going on, it looks like they're moving pretty well.
Yes. Donnie, would you like to say anything on that?
They're forming bases for the steel structures on AEP side. We're pretty well finished on our side moving everything across. We've also contacted cable and telephone. They're going to transfer on the other side as well. So everything's moving along fine. The brush is pretty well gone. There's a little bit of stump work and grass cleanup on there. But the next big project in that area, other than pouring the concrete is, they are going to remove the old power line that goes across the interstate right there. So they're preparing to do that soon.
Now, the south end of the bike trail, are they pulling the wire now? Are they using the wooden transmission poles after that last metal one that was said?
Only temporary right now.
Okay.
Those will all be steel and go through there. All the big switch pole goes into substation and then those will be steel poles that go all the way to Robeyville.
Okay.
The few wooden poles will be left, so they're going to top those just from the new substation or ring bus that they built right there. Just a little piece that goes up the hill. That'll be on our line only. So it's coming along really well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions for the service director? Move on to Police Department, Police Chief, Matt Arbenz.
Good evening, council. The monthly report for November's, we had 321 calls, 10 of them with crashes, 24 arrests, four warrants served, two domestics and 75 traffic stops. We had a part-time officer resign, reason being he got a full-time commission with a department that does not allow him to hold dual commissions. We have one officer, as Jeremy mentioned, that's in a two-week training. And we have Officer Porter, who is recuperating after an elbow surgeries, but hopefully we'll have him back within a week and a half or so. That's it.
Anyone have any questions for the Police Chief? Okay, thanks again, Matt. Move on to Planning and Zoning Director, Annette.
Well done. Good evening, everyone. As Jeremy mentioned, we have the temporary budget to pass. I'd like to get that passed tonight because I can go ahead and start working in 2023, putting the budget and numbers on. So when January rolls around, I'll be able to do payroll and things like that. And the donation fund, that's actually, it's a creation of a new fund, just a number up from the old Parks and Rec Fund 2041, 2042. And it would, like, we would put all the donations in there instead of a different bank account. It's just a different fund. It'll still all go into the same bank account, but it'll be for all the donations. Like Eric gets, Eric gets a lot of donations for like concerts, events and things like that. And that way we can separate that money from just his regular operating money. And this actually was money that came in this year from the 5K that we can put it into that account and then pay the payments out of it.
Can you ask that via mercy?
Yes. Because that's this year's money, but then we'll have the fund next year and we'll, I'll get an estimate from Eric on what he thinks will get in donations and it'll just go into that fund and we can keep track of the donations and keep them separate.
It's my understanding that we have to get approval from the state auditor to create a new fund?
Not for all the funds, we don't.
Pardon me?
No, it's just certifying funds. We don't on this one.
Also, I noticed on this temporary appropriations budget that you have Parks and Recreation's donations fund. Do you mean you already created that?
That's this one.
Yes, because I was saying that it's already created even though we haven't approved it yet.
Well, I hope you'll approve it.
No, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, it's on there for next year, yes. And that's just an estimate, so we can work off the donations at the beginning of the year.
It will be voted on tonight. So if you approve it, it's approved, it's already in the budget. If it's approved.
Any other questions for the Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy?
Okay.
Move on to Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Jim. I met with a representative of C-Biz Valuation Group. They look at structures within the city and facilities that the city owns and they update the appraised values. This information is then passed along to the public and entities pool of Ohio. That's I think who handles our insurance or get our insurance from. Let's see here. Don Smithberger and Jason Duval also met with this representative. The information gathered is used to update our insurance rates and determine if any changes are needed. Don and I also met with a representative from Zayo Field regarding the new conduit that will be placed within the city. We discussed board locations, reviewed traffic concerns and manhole locations along the proposed route. Timeline has not yet been determined for this project, but we anticipate that they'll want to start relatively soon. The Board of Zoning Appeals did meet on November 15th and approved hiring associates relocating to 128 South Marietta Street. And just update council as well, turning the health system. We'll be opening up some more physicians' offices at 107 Plaza Drive in Plaza West. This location is currently vacant, so good news there. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Em. Anybody have any questions for Tom? Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to Council Committee's Finance. Mike, do you have any questions, anything, Finance?
Avenue report tonight, our Finance Committee meeting is the next two months from now. We do have these two ordinances. The 46 Avenue problem passing, I think 47, I know you want to pass tonight, but I think we're talking to some of the council members, we haven't had time to go through it all. It's quite lengthy. I went through about half of it. But, I mean, if it needs passing, it's passing, but I haven't had a chance to look through it.
Well, that hasn't been given out. Pardon?
Wasn't it given the last council meeting?
That's what I thought was actually given out the last council meeting, but in order to get the, it's up to council. I mean, they decide whether they're passing it or not, but in order to get these appropriations to the start of the beginning of the year, we don't really have time to do three ratings. We'll be into the first of the year and we'll...
Everything's basically, pretty much a, just for the first quarter on all the funds. I did do all the salary appropriations for the year because that takes a lot of work. So I went ahead and added those in for the year, which include 2.5% raises for union and non-union.
These are, these are temporary, right?
They're temporary, but the...
They need to be changed after the first year if they need to be?
Yeah, we'll have actually four appropriations probably in February. They have to be passed by a fee in March.
So this is a temporary, passed...
This is the temporary, other than the salaries. I put the full salaries in, so we can actually, we could put the full one if we wanted to as a temporary, but I didn't do that, so.
I have another question on that, that donation fund. Is there a reason that we couldn't just have it as a line item fund within the rec fund?
I mean, we could, but it's still, Eric asked for actually a different bank account, but I'm not going to do a different bank account because everything goes into the same bank account already, so.
I think from what Eric told me, too, this is money that people donated and the money that's going to go to this family and they actually, till this fund is created, they can't write a check to this family to get the money that was raised.
Yeah, we didn't actually appropriate, we ate enough money for this, so it's an additional revenue and appropriation, so. It'll just help keep better track of the donations.
Any other questions?
Mike, you, I feel more comfortable, this is just temporary, so. Council, what's your view?
Okay, any other questions?
Just like, can you explain just temporary?
Temporary, three months.
Three months?
That's it. First quarter. We have to do this. We're required by law to do this.
And after three months or before the three month?
We'll have the final one.
I couldn't do, I couldn't...
So we can vote and change if we have to.
Right, I can't make any expenditures, payroll expenditures. I can't do anything in January unless we have a temporary budget. in January unless we have a temporary budget, some kind of budget. There's not just money left over where you can go, you have to put it on the system, on the UAN accounting system, because 22 will be done at the end of December, so I have to have 2023 in the UAN system to be able to do anything in 2023. So it's temporary, and then Jeremy and I and the departments will work together on the full budget starting in January, and we have till the end of March to pass that.
Okay, any other questions, Mike, your...
Okay.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay. Move on to utilities, this fellow's not here this evening, this so preacher's not here, Streets, Lordside, Don, do you have anything?
Yeah, I drove around a lot today, and the leaves, I mean, really look good, they really must have hit it hard today, and you said that the paw holes are going to start to continue again. You know, I had a couple of phone calls on a couple of different neighborhoods, nothing major, but that's good to hear, that we'll be heading back out.
Yeah, they're going to try and concentrate on the leaves first and get that done, because we've got the prisoners until, after that, we lose them, and then hopefully, hopefully not, but, you know, you start into that S-word, and so...
Good, they've done a lot of patching, it looks good.
So we got a whole truckload of cold patch to sit in the weekend.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, Southside, JC, do you have anything on the Southside?
Same, the leaves are looking good now, they cut most, pretty much all of them, other than that, no report. For being behind, because the truck broke down, we're doing it open, so I'd like to thank the street department guys for their work to catch up.
Very good. Okay, safety, JC, do you have anything?
Next meeting is December 15th at 9 o'clock.
Okay, any other questions for that? Building grounds, Linda, do you have anything on building grounds?
I have no report, but I would like to ask council if anybody's come up with any ideas or anything for South Park. Or are we just going to let it go and let it be as is, or pursue anything at all?
There's going to, Linda, there's going to be a meeting with the landowner later this week, all of that.
I didn't, I didn't receive anything to say now.
Yes, yeah, it's a meeting with, yeah.
Yeah. No, I didn't receive anything. Well, that's all.
Okay, planning commission, Christie.
The next meeting, if needed, is December 12th, but I'm not sure if there's going to be a meeting needed that day or not.
At this point in time, there's no agenda items.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, Fire District, Linda?
Our next meeting is not actually until the 28th at 8:00 AM, but we did have a special meeting on Friday to approve the switch from part-time to full-time for Zetadiah Red, and that is all. Next meeting, as I said, is September, or December 28th, 8:00 AM at the fire station.
Any questions on Fire District? Hey, Recreation, Christie?
The 5K turkey trot was very well attended. They raised $8,000 for the Diomede family, thanks to Mayor Tolman, Jeremy Greenwood, City Council, Chief Arvins, TJ Stewart, Donnie Smithberger, Darren Pitlock, Cumberland Trail Fire Department, Rocco Bala, Eric Timko, and all the volunteers and sponsors for all their work and donations for the event. New lights were installed in offices, restrooms, and meeting at the building, and the next rec board meeting is 4:30 PM this Thursday, December 8th.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Christie?
I'd just like to make a comment, Jen. Thank you very much, Christie. I know that she was down there, one of the participants, walking, and she took one for the team, she turned her ankle, so she's still a little bit game, but I gave her some Hershey's kisses and said thank you, because that's a good councilperson, goes down and walks, and I'm sorry you twisted your hat, John.
Okay, other questions? Park District, Linda, you have anything on Park?
No, I don't. The next meeting is next Monday, the 12th, 4:30 PM at the Premier Legacy Bank.
That's enough of respect, right?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to ordinances and resolutions. Listen.
Okay, council has before tonight two pieces of legislation, both are financial. The first one is ordinance number 2022-46, and this is an ordinance to establish the Parks and Recreation Fund, donation number 2042, to receive revenue from donations, make additional permanent appropriations for the normal expenses of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. It's requested that this be passed as emergency legislation, so the fund can be, the donations from the recent turkey trot can be deposited and distributed, and we will have a separate fund for all those donations that do come through the rec department.
Okay, thank you. Jacob, read the first reading on ordinance 2022-46.
Ordinance number 2022-46, an ordinance to establish the Parks and Recreation Fund donations, number 2042, to receive revenue from donations, make additional permanent appropriations for the normal expenses of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. There has been request for emergency language on that, so, Don?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a second, Mr. Thrash. Take a roll call vote?
Jordan?
No.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, we have a call to one that requires five votes to be passed as emergency, so that will just go down as the first reading.
Joe, may I ask a question for you?
I'm noticing throughout the meeting, we've had some council members using cell phones, I would request they refrain from using cell phones in communications during the meeting. Did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to ask Councilwoman Jordan, what is your apprehension on some nebulous technicality? This family might have given a bi-Christmas present for their children. I mean, this is a real family who's got someone with cancer, and this is important. I'm concerned about the legality of what we're doing here. We've got a lawyer sitting here. We do, and I, according to the ORC, what I mean, the state's... Please vote, please vote, and ORC 2, exactly as your... Quote, Catherine? It's 5, 4... This is why I have my phone, Jim, I wanted to be sure of what I was looking at, just so you know.
I think what we need to do, like, concerns legal issues, or legal issues that doesn't matter, is before that's brought up in council, I think, council, since we do have a law director, we do need to contact them and get an opinion from them prior to the meeting.
Is there any reason we just...
I mean, I...
A legitimate...
I mean, that's, I mean, that's why we have a law director.
Right, if we get them into decent enough. What's that, please? I'm speaking to Jim. But again, I guess I still don't understand your hesitation. Well, I'm sorry you don't understand, Catherine, but... I'm just, again, okay, do you... As I said, I explained to you. Not actively, but wait on me.
Okay, the second piece of legislation up tonight, also being requested as emergency, is ordinance number 2022-47. That's an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. This is your, basically, your annual temporary budget that allows the finance director to continue the business of running the city through the end of March, which is when the final budget needs to be passed.
Okay. Jacob, would you read the first reading on 2022-47?
Yep. Ordinance number 2022-47, an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, emergency language is in this, they're requesting emergency passage, does anyone wish to take any action on the temporary budget?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and...
Okay, we have a second, Thrash. We'll take a vote on whether this will be considered emergency legislation.
Jordan? No.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Go with the paper.
Okay, Jen, we require five passes to emergency, so this will just go as the first reading. Okay, that's everything on the agenda for the next meeting, Monday, December 19th, 7:00 PM. Donnie?
Can I ask a question? Sure. Jeremy, do we have an update we're trying to... Any other case?
They're working on the, what was it, the governance, governance plan, they need to have that, so there'll be an announcement where they'll have a public meeting where two different times in the same day, morning and afternoon, if the public has any concerns, and then also they'll be in those in the newspaper, so as soon as that's done, we should be, we should be good. They're continuing to watch the numbers and just do...
Will we be, like, voting soon on that, the legislation on that, or?
No, you guys already did.
Okay.
They already voted, though.
Right.
They approved us this time, and then once we have enough, we're going to let you guys know.
So if we voted, that was the approval then?
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So the, once, once we have some projection, okay, it's going to go down to this number, then I'm going to go, okay, we're assigned based off the recommendation, and then let you guys know.
My concern was, I noticed that the prices were down to about 50...
Yeah.
50, 57 cents for a cubic foot.
Coal gas was 86, 86 something.
With the warm weather on the last couple of weeks, we grew up from 72 cents down to 57.
So they're still working on it with us, it's just... Yes. Hopefully we don't shut down.
Okay. At this time, we have nothing else on the agenda, but you need to motion to your...
Second?